So this one's the volunteer bank and the vacancy information. So maybe I'll start on that. We've brought up the idea of a volunteer bank many times, and we do have a bunch of openings on committees right now. Liz and I have been chatting a little about finally going ahead and sending out a mailing and asking for people's interest in potentially joining various boards or committees or volunteering the time. We had wondered if maybe such a sheet could go out with the census or go out with taxes. And actually, we discussed it again today and wondered that since we have money available for it, if we shouldn't just send that out as a separate mailing.
So how big a document will this be?
And I guess that's open for question or open for discussion.
The reason I ask, Mark, is we looked, the Council on Aging, looked at piggybacking the tax mailings. And it's not that expensive if it's, I believe they split it up into thirds of a regular page. So that might be one avenue. The other avenue is certainly we could include it with the Council on Aging mailing that, you know, that would at least alleviate some of the expense because that would get to the seniors.
But that would only get to the seniors.
Right. You'd still have to do a regular mailing for the balance.
I mean, my inclination at this point would that the impact might come from a totally separate mailing rather than two or three different things at once.
I agree with you on that one, Mark, that I think it would be more impactful if this was a standalone document.
So any thoughts of how this might be written or what we might ask or how we might go about it?
No, I mean, maybe all three of us just send all our suggestions to Liz, put out a draft of kind of encompassing the three, and then we refine it. Do you have a deadline that you're working towards or is it kind of open?
No, I think it's totally open. And really, it's just, we discussed this many times, so we've just never gotten there. And I think my thought was, we're not so far away from the holidays to whatever degree there's a holiday. And we got this done fairly soon, you know, before people get distracted. Might be a good idea. We also have a bunch of openings. We're going to have a ZBA member potentially, two ZBA alternatives, open space, Board of Assessors. I think maybe the COA is going to have an opening, and the Library Circulation Clerk. So lots of openings, so worth getting it out, both in terms of future interest or maybe a good way to let people know about these openings now. So your idea, John, in a different way says, sounds like dump it on Liz. But I think we each could get to Liz with ideas on this and see if we couldn't put together, I can work with Liz and see if we couldn't put together a draft and then sort of figure out the process on receiving responses and how to tabulate the whole thing. So I'm willing to work with Liz, and I think I'd love comments from either the other selectmen to Liz along the way. And maybe we can see what we can do over the next few weeks.
Yeah, we might even, we have some people who are good writers in town, that once we get the ideas of how we want to position it, that they could kind of cosmetically make it look good. And I think that's going to be important in terms of getting a reaction from people.
Okay.
Do we have many job descriptions or, you know, an idea of what these committees do? So people, or can we direct them to the website for that?
I think directing to the website, it occurs to me that the other cool way to do this is to remind people that these boards and commissions and committees have open meetings. And a good way to get a sense is attend a meeting or two and see what it's about and see if there's interest. Yeah, I think those are the two things.
Are the meetings recorded where they will be able to access an old meeting on the website? Because not everybody meets that often.
Yeah. No, most of them aren't.
No.
Okay.
All right. Well, we'll, I guess we're planting seeds. We'll see how they sprout, and I'll try to keep this moving a little bit.
Sounds good.
Okay. Still don't see Ken Thompson, so let's go to the Board Liaison's document. So I guess we did this last a year ago. And I think we've been doing this for three or four years, having Board of Selectmen assigned to the various commissions and committees to act as communications and sort of oversight or undersight, as the case may be. So Liz sent this out earlier today. Are anyone seeing any changes they feel like they want to make? I'm seeing at least a couple that I'd like to propose. So maybe I'll throw out mine first. On bylaws, I've been attending the last few meetings and try to navigate, well, trying to navigate concerns and frustrations. So if that were all right with you, Christine, I'm glad to take on being the liaison to that one for a while.
You're muted, Christine.
Would it make more sense for me to continue with it where Kimberly's a member of the committee?
It might. We've had some frank discussions over the kitchen table. And actually, it's gone reasonably well. I don't want to take it away from you in any way, but I've been attending the last few meetings. I mean, either way, I'm going to keep attending the next couple of meetings. I just want to get it stabilized. Maybe we can leave it just as it is.
Okay.
I'd feel more comfortable with that, too.
Okay. And I'll just, I'll keep sticking my nose into the process and
Perfect.
trying to make it smooth along the way.
Okay, that sounds great.
Okay. And then somewhat similarly, totally up to you again, Christine. It seems like there's a bunch of highway projects or dreams of projects that I've kind of been working on. And I'm glad to leave it as it is, but I'm also glad to be that liaison if you wanted your role.
Mark, that makes perfect sense because I think you have been working closely with the superintendent. And yeah, that does make sense for you to take over as the liaison for that.
Okay, so I'm glad to take on that.
Thank you very much.
And then, I mean, I'll just throw this out there. Fire, I know, John, you're listed on that. I also see myself on wage and personnel, which I know nothing about. And I don't know, John, if you were interested in trading those two positions.
I'm not. I don't want wage and personnel. I also like fire after, quite frankly, after everything we went through to get a new chief. I thought it was impactful, and I learned a lot, and hopefully I can help there.
Okay, so I offered.
You did, you did.
All right. Any other changes you guys would like to propose?
No, I'm good. I think it really, it makes sense. I don't know if Liz would want to just reach out to the department heads and give us or give them our contact information and make them aware of who their liaison is. I no longer have my home phone, so I would need to give them my cell.
Okay, I can do something else for people.
Okay.
Great.
Great.
And John, you're okay with all the other assignments?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, very good. We'll, we'll march through another year.
You know, just a thought, but you know, we're having these five-minute conversations with department heads coming in. Maybe we should have the liaisons kind of introduce them.
That's a great idea.
Think about.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Actually, since that subject's come up, we were going to invite, I think, school committee members maybe to this one, but that didn't work out. Are they coming, Liz, next time?
Yeah, they're coming on the 16th.
So they would be our invitee on the 16th?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
And John, I think that's a great idea for the liaison to introduce, and we'll keep that process going.
That will be me. I've got the schools.
All right.
Some of them are going to say, oh, I didn't know that. But that's, that's the power of it.
Still looking for Ken and not seeing him. So let's go to Council on Aging update.
Okay. The last meeting was on October 26. I think I've circulated in the past, but we definitely need to find a director. Liz, the job description that is open, have we had many inquiries?
So that was going to be part of my update.
Oh, okay.
Posting period has closed, and we have one applicant.
Can we open it back up? Because I don't feel comfortable.
Good, but I think before we would open it back up, we would interview that candidate. She came very highly recommended by, actually, by our assistant town clerk. And she seemed to have a unique skill set and some municipal.
Yeah, I saw the skill set. You know, I'm not, I don't know the lady, so I can't comment. But I, it, most of it was entitled, not in doing. But I do think that we put together three people from the Council on Aging Board to do the interviews as a preliminary. That's Nancy Butler as chairperson, Dottie Martell as one of the Council on Aging members, and one to be named.
I just, I think that we might also want either like myself or
Absolutely, absolutely.
from the townhouse to be involved. As much as the position relates to the Council on Aging, it's also a key department head position. And we need somebody that understands municipal government, managing grants, reporting requirements, somebody who has an idea of the way that municipal finance works, how to put in for stuff. So I'm like
I wasn't suggesting that you weren't going to be part of the process. I just wanted to make sure the council was.
I don't know. I'm just wondering how many different people from the Council on Aging, I don't know. I guess it's open for, for discussion, whatever you guys think.
Well, the reason I'm suggesting this is the Council on Aging was completely left out of any management decisions in the past. And I think it's important that they get a feeling of empowerment. Because one of the things we've got to do is broaden our reach to the seniors. We have a very, what I consider a very narrow reach right now. And hopefully over time, we can, you know, encourage more seniors to come into the process. I can talk about that a little more, but one of the things we're doing is we're finding, we have this software called Senior Center software that allows us to put people's information in there so that we can do robo-calls, for instance, if there's an emergency. We can do mailings, we can, we know who's on Meals on Wheels. Obviously, it's very confidential. It only has one or two people who have access to this. But what it does allow us to do is to understand seniors' needs. Now, because a lot of the seniors in Plinton and Yankees, a lot of them don't want to be on that, but that's fine. You know, at least we know they don't want to be on it. The other thing we're finding is that as people move from landlines to cell lines, we don't have the information. So our next newsletter is going to address that. That's why we had talked about addressing the, putting a mailing with the tax mailing, because we could just put in a little third of a page, piece of document that could be returned if anybody wanted to update their information. But the, the outcome is that we want to increase our reach to people. We don't have a lot of money to do much for programs. Certainly with the pandemic, it's very hard to do. But we look over and we see Kingston doing some things online. They've even started meeting in a few instances. They have a quilting class going that's in person. We, we can't do that. First of all, we have too many members of the old quilting. So the Board of Health wouldn't allow that anyways, and rightly so. So, but we are thinking of things. They're working on Zoom bingo. Who knows? Maybe that's something we can piggyback. So that's some of the things that are going on in Council on Aging. We also did a, I went with Jim Mustakaros to do the brown bag program where we pick up brown bags up in Brockton. These are put on by the Greater Boston Food Bank group. And we have 27 people in our center Woodlands. We have another six that are done in town. And then we also pick up some that go to Moshfield. So we are doing programs like that. We've got the plowing program where we'll reimburse, I think it's $25 for plowing, to senior citizens through a grant. We've got the handy person program where they can hire a person, and then we'll reimburse them for up to $25, $28 for that. One of the needs we're finding is we need volunteer drivers. Jim Mustakaros has a full schedule of driving. He has a set schedule for people who are on dialysis. So that takes up two days. Jackie Freitas has been helping out. She's been a great help. But it'd be nice to have one or two, especially now that we have the wheelchair van. Jim's fully certified to run the van, but we, the wheelgate van. It would be nice to have somebody be able to use the other van since we still haven't, and it seems to be in good shape. So that's some of the things we're working on. Liz, are you going to talk about the Town Properties Committee? You're muted.
I was in my update.
You were? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just.
Oh, I'd like to circle back to the Director of Elder Services.
Yeah.
If we've advertised this position and the application deadline has passed, it seems like we should move forward with an interview with whatever applicants we have.
But we have one. That's the point.
Okay. But if that's what we have, and we've had some indication that this could be a, a good fit, I, it feels like we should put together an interviewing committee and potentially bringing a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. I don't have a problem if the Board of Directors plus a selectman plus Liz wanted to do an initial interview, but it would seem reasonable to see if there's something there.
Oh, I agree. I think that's what I was suggesting. But I'm just suggesting that we may want to also keep it open in case there's one or two. We haven't had it open very long.
I, I think I don't have a problem with that. It certainly feels like we ought to move ahead and see if we can get this thing moving forward and see if we really have a potentially appropriate applicant. And again, I, you know, we're getting to that time of year. We're going to, not so far away from holidays and whatever else is going to come in the next few weeks. And it'd be really nice to get something off our plate, so.
I don't want to get it off our plate, though, just to get it off our plate.
Absolutely not. And that's not what I mean by any means, but just beginning to move forward. Actually, I mean, I'd like, John, to get some of the burden off you as well.
Yeah, I would too. But I feel right now, I want to make sure, I don't want to have the same, same thing happen that happened in the past.
Totally agree. But if there's a good one out there, moving
Sure, we should, we should start the interview right now. I mean,
Okay.
we've got the people who are willing to do it. We've got Liz. I'd be glad, you know, I'll be doing it.
Okay. I'd say go for it as soon as possible. Let us know.
All right. We can try to get something scheduled. I'll reach out to her, and we'll get some potential dates.
Great, very good.
So this is our internal candidate. We have not posted the job externally yet.
No, it's been, it was internal, and then it was external. It was in the newspaper.
Oh, so it has already gone out?
Yes. And this person is external, but was recommended by somebody internal.
Okay.
But it's only been a couple of weeks, right, Liz, that it's been external?
Uh, I think a little more than that. And it was in the paper twice. It was published in the paper two different times.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody had, you know, hasn't applied yet, I wouldn't think that we're, unless something was changed, where we advertise it or, you know, in a different manner, I don't think we're going to get any more candidates going this with the same route. So John, you're going to be the one who works with Liz and some of the members of the Board of Directors to interview the candidate?
Absolutely.
Okay, that sounds great to me.
All right. So does that take care of the Council on Aging update?
Sure.
All right. So I guess zoning enforcement officer appointment, I guess we can go ahead with that. Liz, do you want to update us on where we're at with that?
Sure. We received an application from Ken Thompson for the position. And he does appear to meet all of the qualifications and criteria. And he is a town resident. Obviously, if he were to be appointed to this position, he needs to step down from the Zoning Board of Appeals. And so Tom Millius and I did meet with him, and we sent the Board of Selectmen a letter, I believe on October 29, just kind of documenting that process, and that we both recommend that he be appointed to the position on an interim through the end of the fiscal year. And I feel that with the interim title, it'll give both he and the town a chance to see if it's a good fit or not. Because he's been, he's provided a lot of expertise to us over the years on the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Bylaw Review Committee. So I think it makes sense to see how it works, kind of changing the dynamic of, of the relationship. And if he likes it, and if we think it's working out. So the interim title, I think, would give everyone involved some of that flexibility.
And where was it, when it was advertised externally, where was it advertised?
It was on the website. I think it was on social media. And I'd have to go back and check for the paper.
Okay. So I have a few comments. I, I think, I know I didn't, I think the whole board, this Board of Selectmen really admired Tom Millius and admired his approach. I really admired his kind of dividing up, dealing with new violations or new concerns, and dealing in a really balanced, fair, measured way with existing. I thought we had a real good one, and I thought he was doing it exactly right. I think he got kind of tired along the way, and there was certainly some tension with the Bylaws Review Committee. I mean, it's been a challenge lately in the last few zoning enforcement officers, a really difficult position. I've served with Ken on, for several years, on the Community Preservation Committee. And I served with him on ZBA for a while. I admire his, his, his work. I think he writes better legal opinions than town council does a lot of the time. And he surely knows the lay of the land. I think he knows bylaws. It's actually an interesting dynamic to appoint someone from the Bylaw Review Committee who has a committee that has some significant concerns about enforcement. And I, I'm really pleased that Liz had a chance to sit down with him and kind of have a frank discussion of how the dynamics were going to work. So I, I'm actually excited about this, and I think it's worth a try. I think the interim piece is really, really good for both sides, too. If it, if it doesn't work out either way, it gives us kind of a gentle way out. So I would be in favor of going ahead with this appointment.
I'm in favor of going ahead with the appointment for the same reasons that you said, Mark.
Make a motion.
So I make a motion. We appoint Ken Thompson as interim zoning enforcement officer, starting now, running through June 30, 2021.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. Roll call.
Roll call. Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Try Mr. Trump.
Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mr. Russo. See, this is what happens about the second hour into board, into these kind of board meetings. Mr. Russo, aye. All right, we have a zoning enforcement officer. We hope he can move forward in a balanced and auspicious way. Okay, that brings us up to the Town Administrator Update.
So the Town Properties Committee has been very busy. We're going through a lot of the, both ongoing projects, we're trying to get out to bid, and then looking at priorities moving forward. Currently, for the Highway Barn Roof Project, we're in receipt of the plans and specs for the bid documents for that project. We are awaiting a cost estimate, and then that should let us know if we're going to have, generally speaking, enough in the way of funds that were appropriated at the last town meeting, or if it's something that's going to need to be put off until the spring. So more to come on that. We're also looking at obtaining prices and proposals for design services for the front of the townhouse to make the entrance to the Inspection Services Department and the second floor of our building handicap accessible. So that's ongoing. We also discussed a memo that we have received from the Board of Health about examining our septic system issues, the plumbing issues, and everything that we have going on at the town campus. And I'm going to be responding to that formally later this week. But we do plan to move forward with getting prices, to have an assessment done of some sort. And we acknowledge that the problem appears to be twofold, both the septic system in its entirety, but also there are clearly some internal plumbing issues within the townhouse that possibly need to be addressed. So we're going to be looking into that. Otherwise, we're, so the building is closed tomorrow and Wednesday, tomorrow for the election and Wednesday for disinfecting. The library is also going to be disinfected on Wednesday and the police station. So all of that's happening on Wednesday, and the town offices will all be available remotely. People are fully set up and capable of working remotely, and we'll be checking email and voicemail accordingly for those two days. Otherwise, in terms of COVID, I know Art's on the call, so he may want to add something. But there were new statewide COVID restrictions announced today from the governor's office, effective this Friday. Face coverings will be required in public regardless of your ability to social distance for ages five and up. Limit on indoor gatherings to 10 people, outside gatherings to 25 people, all need to end by 9:30 p.m. A stay-at-home advisory from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., except for work or school purposes. Establishments that sell alcohol must stop sales at 9:30 p.m. And any like entertainment, recreation venues, that sort of thing, all need And any like entertainment, recreation venues, that sort of thing, all need to close at 9:30 PM. And restaurants stop table service at 9:30 PM but can continue takeout. So that's something that we um, us, the Board of Health and the Emergency Management Team will continue to monitor. Um, we may find ourselves in a situation where we need to reverse course on some things or do some things differently since it seems like the numbers are going up. Um, we were alerted to um one more positive COVID case in town today and we're awaiting further information if some of the prior cases have been officially cleared. So it seems like the numbers are going up everywhere and I think it's something that we all need to be aware of and can't really let our guard down. And the Emergency Management Team will make sure that we're following it very closely and will take action if we need to, um, like we did in the past, but so far, so good. Um, everybody seems very pleased with the fact that we're having those buildings disinfected on Wednesday. Um, I think that goes a long way just as a kind of a confidence booster. Otherwise, though, everything's been going well as far as managing COVID in general. Um, and we're able, some of the supplies are coming in that we had ordered um for different town departments, so those are being dispersed as they come in. And um we're waiting, we have two pending checks um from the county for CARES reimbursement. So we just checked in on that status um a few days ago. The fire chief was in communication with the county, so that money should be coming in soon. The fire chief, town accountant and myself participated in a meeting with the Silver Lake Regional School Committee officials. There were a couple of representatives from there, uh, but it was more of a staff level meeting with some school staff, um, us and then the town administrators from Kingston, Halifax and their town accountants. And we were able to work through some of the procedural questions about applying for CARES funding, where it's coming through the county, it's a little awkward for the regional schools. Um, so we're coming up with an appropriate percentage and we made note that we, you know, that we're a willing partner with them and we're happy to put in for any reasonable reimbursement request um within that allotment. So we're committed to working together with them on that and we have two um pending submittals right now for Denit um for some Chromebooks and there was some plumbing work that was done at the school, so everyone's working really hard to get those reimbursement requests into the county and to get those funds back to the town.
And Art, do you have anything to add as part of a COVID update?
Well, just, just a couple of things. Tonight, a little after about quarter past five, I received two public health alerts. One was for the town of Hanson and the second one was for the town of Pembroke. Last week, uh, we received the uh public health alerts for the towns of Kingston and Plymouth. Uh, so the, the uh threat level is going up, uh, which is not a good thing, but it's, it's something I think pretty much everyone that's connected with DPH and the COVID is The good news is that uh I talked to Chief Silver yesterday and he and Captain Davis were taking the Mavis Program webinar today, which is the state um infectious disease program and how to get into it and how to work with it and so forth, uh, as part of their uh, uh, community uh paramedic program. Uh, so they should be uh onboard. I know last week, uh, the Board of Health wrote a letter to DPH and recommended that they have access to the program. Um, so that's moving forward. They should have it uh now. It'll, it'll, it's again, it's going to be a little bit of a learning curve. It's not the easiest program to uh, to operate. But um, and I think the chief told me that I think it's Wednesday, uh, he's going out to, I believe it's the town of Mansfield who also has this program. And the chief out there, pardon me, has been uh willing to sit with him and show him, pardon me, some of the uh, some of the speed bumps so that hopefully our department can avoid some of the problems that they had. So I, I think we should be up and running very, very shortly with this, at least in the, at the outset of the program, which is uh, which is kind of exciting.
Thanks, Art.
Hey, Art, do you know if uh Middleborough has gone red or not?
Not that I've heard yet, John.
They were, they were red last week.
Were they red?
They were red um last week or the week before. I think now the latest version of the map has them back in yellow.
Okay.
Be mistaken, but I did see them in the red at one point and I know it came down.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else before we go to a minutes approval? Cool. All right. Two sets of minutes. Uh, October 19th. I don't have any edits. Christine or John?
No, that was, that was the easy one.
I thought that um the one vote that we did for the gentleman for school committee should say who it was because all the rest of them were just roll call three zero and that just says roll call four zero. It doesn't really indicate that John Willhampson voted on that.
Oh, good point.
Okay.
All right. Bree, can you make that addition? I'll check with Bree tomorrow on that.
Awesome. Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
And then I think Mike was on the call too. It might be good to note that he um, he approved it as well because I think um he wasn't included in the vote, but Mike and Antoine was um on the call and he was in agreement about making the appointment.
All right, just making notes. All right, I'll get that to Bree.
Okay.
And, and then anything on the uh, uh, October 26th? Uh, was the shortest um Plimpton Board of Selectmen meeting in our 300-year history, I'm proud to say. All right, so um, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve both of these minutes with the edits uh as noted by Christine on the 10-19 meeting.
All right, I can second the, the 10 um 19, but I wasn't at 10-26.
So I'll second the uh 10-26.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, uh, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Joy?
I'll vote um for the 10-19, but I'll abstain on the 10-26.
Very good. And uh, uh, Mr. Russo, yes. Okay, I think we're up to raves. Or rants for that matter.
All right, well, I'll start with, um, I'll do my rave and my rave is for um, it's for everybody that's working in the townhouse, um, and really all of our town employees. I mean, it's such, um, you know, to call out um a couple of people, Kathy Ferguson has done an amazing job, um, Kathy in the Building Department. I mean, Liz does an amazing job every day. Everybody is um really rising to the occasion. It's extremely challenging times. I think the stress level for um residents and people coming in, applicants, is very high. There's been a lot of um, I think tense um interchanges or exchanges that um have happened just because, you know, everything that's happening in the world right now, I think um tempers are shorter, um, might be a good time for us to revisit our, um, that idea of the de-escalation training. But um, I think that, you know, they've done a really great job um working through this with um some uh really large challenges. So hats off to the people that work for the town.
I've got a rave, um, and it sort of corresponds to yours, Christine. I think the Emergency Management Team has done a stellar job getting us through this. Uh, the fact that we have been able to um open the townhouse, open the library, hold a town meeting. I know uh one of the Council on Aging directors from a surrounding town said they were so happy that Plimpton was able to do that because it then put pressure on their people to say, hey, if Plimpton can do it, why can't we? So my hats off to the Emergency Management Team. I think you've done a great job.
And, and my rave is for the election process in Plimpton. I don't want to jinx this, but so far it looks like it has gone unbelievably smoothly as of late last week. For a little town of 2,800, already a thousand people had voted. And pretty much gets me almost to chills uh to march down there and vote. Three centuries of an opportunity to actually have some choice and some control over what happens. I have a couple of friends uh that are speaking to you late last week, New York City, three to five hours to vote. And of course, in Plimpton, at least up until uh, uh, late last week, one could just walk in. We've done a lot of measures to make it safe, so for those that haven't voted, don't miss the chance tomorrow, please.
I just hope the Russians can't get into our voting box. A crank system.
All right. Any last words? Otherwise, we'll be back in two weeks. So in a mo, I, I would make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Uh, roll call, Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mr. Russo? I thank you, everyone. Please be safe. Please vote.
Good night.
Night.